Welcome, everybody. Called this June 20th regular meeting of 2023 to order. We're gonna start with a roll call. Commissioner Floyd?
Here.
Commissioner Burdette?
Here.
Commissioner Corbett is not present. Commissioner Deloach?
Here.
Commissioner Loper, not present. Commissioner Kiefer, I am here. With that, I will ask us all to stand. Commissioner Deloach is gonna offer the invocation and then will lead us in the place of allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. Please be with us and help us do your will. Please help us remember that all good things come through you, Lord. And we thank you for all of your many blessings. And we ask that you would watch over our world leaders, our state leaders, and our local leaders, and hope that they would ask you for guidance, Lord. And in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we see justice for all.
With that, we have the agenda in front of us. Are there any proposed changes?
No, Mr. Chairman, no changes.
Okay, no proposed changes from staff?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Deloach and a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise, unanimous approval. You all should have received the minutes via email for the June 6, 2023, regular meeting. If you've had a chance to review.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Deloach and a second by Commissioner Floyd to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise, unanimous approval. I'd like to remind everybody that if you have an item you want to speak on, if you'll just speak to it at the time of the item and try to allow time for anybody else that wants to speak, we would appreciate it and keep the business of the county moving on. Remind everybody that the documents from this meetings are located in the clerk's office as well as the Board of Commissioners website. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I will read those items, and then we will vote in bulk on those items. Item number one, consideration to renew the intergovernmental agreement between the Effingham County School District, Effingham County Board of Commissioners, and the Effingham County Sheriff's Office for fiscal year '24. Consideration to approve to renew the fire services agreement with the city of Springfield for a one-year period. Item number three, consideration to approve to renew fire protection service agreement with the city of Guyton. Item number four, consideration to approve a lease termination letter to the city of Guyton for the use of the Guyton Fire Building. Item five, consideration to approve to renew the agreement with Tarheel Medical Billing DBA Colleton Software, Inc. for EMS billing services. Item number six, consideration to approve to renew the agreement with the city of Port Wentworth for the use of an inmate work detail. Item number seven, consideration to approve to renew the task order with Thomason Hutton for professional consulting services for program management. Item number eight, consideration to approve and publish a job description for a field training officer for emergency medical services. Item number nine, consideration to approve to appoint Rebecca Boston to the Coastal Regional Commission Council. Item number 10, consideration to reappoint Bruce Path to the Department of Family and Children's Services Board. Item number 11, consideration to approve to reappoint Gussie Neese to the Department of Public Health, Board of Health. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Deloach and a second by Commissioner Burdette. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise unanimously. The consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to unfinished business. First item is consideration to approve a second reading of an application by Randy Hadden, Jeremy Neese, and Chuck Kilderbrandt to rezon. One hundred two point six seven acres located on U.S. Highway 80 from AR 1 and B 3 to I 1 to allow for warehouse development. Map number 354, parcel number 21, 21B, 21C in the first district. Okay, this, I'll remind, this is not a public hearing, but I know some interesting parties are here. And if we can keep it to a minimum, I will allow, you know, one or two people to speak just for a short period of time on both sides, if everybody's okay with that, on a second reading.
Hello.
Just state your names.
I'm Melissa Still, and I thank you for your time today in regards to this. We appreciate what the gentlemen have proposed in regards to buffers. We understand it's their property, and we appreciate everything that they've done over the last couple of years. As we stated before, it's not so much as what they're trying to do on the property, it's just in regards to what's around it. With spot zoning being mostly residential in that area, I know there are a few places that are, there are industrial. But that's one of the things that we as a whole down our street are concerned about is getting the infrastructure set up in that area from 17 and 80, or even back to Jimmy Deloach, all the way up through 280, which is not in Effingham County. We've seen just a backup of everything when there's just no room on either side of the road sometimes to get around when there's so much traffic. And again, I know you can't control what happens on Highway 80 because it is a state highway or federal highway, but just hearing us out in regards to possibly tabling approval of the warehouse just until, you know, something is done with Highway 80. And hopefully, you know, hopefully something can be done sooner than later in regards to that with the federal, but it's just really, we want to be heard. We want to just understand that it's nothing against the gentlemen at all. We understand that they've done everything per the ordinances and the codes, but it's just to please hear us as a community of what we're asking for just a little bit more time not to approve that. Because not only that, is it's gonna cause a domino effect. Once you start approving one, there are other large properties down Highway 80 that could be brought to your attention, brought to rezon. And then just the logistical nightmare that it could bring to that side of the county. So I appreciate your time and listening to us, and we really appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have one more.
Yes, I think you quit. I'm Dennis Hales. I live on George Road. The last meeting y'all had, it was brought up that y'all haven't had a study of the area. I was raised in Meldrum. Meldrum ought to have a say so, and this Faulkville ought to have a say so, and Eden ought to have a say so before you. Something happens with this, and like I said, that everything's been done right. If y'all could guarantee no one of the warehouses would go across the street and everything else, we'd be tickled to death. But we think it's gonna open it up to an industrial area, and it's gonna ruin a lot of neighborhoods, so we shall consider that.
Understandable. Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say that I'm Doug Morgan, EMC engineer here on behalf of the applicants. If y'all had any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Is there a timeline for construction or anything with you guys for the development at this right now?
No, sir.
So nothing's gonna start changing anytime soon?
No, sir.
Okay. And there is talk of four-laneing Highway 80, is that not correct?
That's correct.
There been some discussion with that? So I mean, there is infrastructure coming. Again, we don't control that. We've had those discussions with Ms. Purcell and the GDOT folks, and they're aware, but their funds have to cover every issue in the state. So we get our little portion, and, but they know, you know, what we're dealing with over there, and they know there's the coming growth.
They're gonna widen 36 miles of Highway 80.
Yeah, it's coming. I remember Bill Hitchens spoke somewhere, and he says that the road needs are always five to seven years behind because the growth typically comes first, and then the roads come following that. I don't know if that's a true statement, but we do understand. But, you know, that's in the state's hands, but it is coming.
Any more questions or comments?
I'm Sharon Hales. I also live on George Road. If you were to table this and you do a plan, you do a study, what's involved in that and what kind of timeframe? Because I know it was mentioned in the last meeting, we don't even have a plan. We've not studied this part of the county, and nothing is in place. So if that comes up, how does it come about, and what kind of timeframe are you talking about?
What kind of study are you talking about?
The study for just the makeup in our part of the county. Is it gonna be all industrial? Is it gonna be a mix where you have commercial and residential? Right now, we have a few touches of industrial. We've got commercial. We're very concerned. There's already property signs for sale up down the road from us. If this one goes, and from here what you've told us all along, if you say yes to one person, you have to say yes to everybody else. That puts a whole row probably from here to 280 of nothing but warehouses. I understand people wanting to sell, and I understand wanting to make money, but, and then the road situation. My husband was coming home from Statesboro yesterday, right at 280, where they put in some of those where the water thing was. He said they had the traffic stopped, one flagman, one lane. Can you imagine that in the middle of a rush hour, how far those trucks would be backed up? It's just, I appreciate what they did too. I just don't think it's the right place to put it.
Ma'am, let me ask you this. If there were 600 apartments behind you, what do you think that would do?
Would 600 apartments fit back there?
Probably, or more.
Well, it would still have to go through this boarding. It would, I mean, this board, it would have to meet all the criteria.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. It's, you know, my statement last meeting, you know, Effingham has always been rural. There's been pockets of subdivisions here and there. And everything's changing. It's just a change in community because people are moving up here. Jobs are coming to the area. There was an article in the Herald, I believe, this week, that the Savannah port is just growing exponentially, and that there's a demand for that. And if there wasn't a demand, these folks wouldn't make that type of investment.
Why not?
But it's just like, people keep talking about money. That property where you live and that development is, somebody owned that. Somebody said, "I can make money by cutting this into lots." So, yes, people are out to make money. Whoever developed that land made money. Whoever built y'all's houses made money. It's just, I understand, and all I can say is that the states are where we're trying to address the traffic problems. But if there's, if we put a bunch of apartments or a bunch more houses, it's gonna, there's gonna be traffic problems as well.
Oh, big, those big, long trucks, though.
But if you, we did a study with the Sheriff's Department, and less than 1% of the accidents involve trucks. It's everybody, it's all the people trying to get back and forth to work in Chatham County. So most of the accidents are with residents. It's not with the trucks.
Well, the more trucks on the road, the traffic slows up, and then people are anxious they're wanting to get around. We've had some accidents. We've had some deaths. Why not an industrial designated area with the warehouses in that, like the area you've got off 16 on the other side? Why can't the warehouses be in a contained their own area and not infringe on residential and on a road that is not gonna be four-lane for another 10 years?
Well, again, I-16 is convenient to I-16, which is an interstate highway. That's where the trucks are trying to go from the port and get to I-16, and that's a legitimate NSA state truck route.
It's a mess right now. I went in this morning.
I don't disagree.
Ah, and I was like, oh, my gosh, it was raining, and I thought, let me get through that little pass in there. I'm just asking y'all to, before we make this decision, because it's going to make a drastic change. It's gonna be a drastic effect on that whole area. And once it's done, once, here we go, and once we let it pass and we approve it.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you guys, have you got anything else that you can explain it any better to me or point out something? I've appealed to all of you. I know we're growing. I know that. I probably won't be here by the time it's finished, but what I'm saying is to spot something, boom, right in there, with not the roads and all that to support it. And Dennis said they were working on that access. At the end of our road for us, that greenhouse, their yard is gonna be one of those lanes to get in or get out. They're gonna need that length to get in there. Would you like that?
It doesn't matter whether I like it or not. He has the right to propose this to us, and it's gonna be over 1,000 foot from George Road, that entrance, isn't it? How far is the entrance from George Road? It's not gonna be right on top of George Road.
Well, she's not right on top of George Road. She's...
She's talking about XL lanes or...
Yeah, the XL lanes right there.
Again, if there was a huge residential development, there's gonna be XL, DCL lanes.
I understand. You're on one side, and I'm on the other.
I'm not on the side. It's just, it's...
We feel like you are for us.
I know you do, but I'm not.
Every time we talk to you.
If any of you had property and came to me, I'm gonna look at the rules and the ordinance, and if you're following the rules and the law, I would be doing the same thing for you. I have not, I'm not getting anything out of this. I know a couple of these guys, just as well as I know some of you folks. I'm not doing anybody any favors here. They're doing what's, they're doing what they're legally allowed to do. You don't like it, I understand.
It's not just a matter of like. It's what it's gonna do to our part. It's not just George Road. It's what's gonna happen to ours. Are we gonna turn into, are we going to turn into a garden city?
Ma'am, do you know where I was raised? You know where the corner of Highway 30 and Highway 21 is? That was a farm. That was where I was raised. Everything around there is blown up and developed. Highway 30 was my dirt road. I understand.
All right, I don't wanna step in. It's not a public hearing, and I'm trying to allow, but, yeah, but I will address, yeah, I wanna, I wanna limit that. You know, as far as the area, we're bound to considering the merits of any petitioner that comes before us. I think that goes back to your, you know, original question on other properties, and we're bound to consider any petition in front of us in the future based on its merits. And I think as a board, we definitely try to do that, and...
I'd say that, you know, like Forrest said, a lot of times there's not a right or wrong. You know, I'm on the side of not doing this because I am afraid of what else is gonna come. You know, that's the biggest thing for me. And I know Mr. Neese, and I hope he doesn't take offense to that because I think he's a great guy, but it's never anything personal for any of us. It's, a lot of times it's very difficult to make these decisions. This particular time, I'm against it, but it's hard for all of us up here. It really is. It's hard to decipher. Because sometimes there is no right or wrong. They do have a right to do something with their land, and we have to make that decision, and it's tough. And it's, it's... We lose sleep over it. It's, so I just wanna throw that out there.
Just a, just quick, I'm sorry. I'm...
I'll read, because, you know, public speaking is not my thing. I'm Latita Schuman. I've spoke with a few of you gentlemen, and again, I agree, change is coming. But we can, can we control this change? I mean, a little bit? Do we want to be, I just have to read it. I sent it to you. It's hard not to be personal, but the, it doesn't have to be low-income housing, and it doesn't have to be warehouse and industrial. We can, it could be nice neighborhoods. We could be middle class. We could be where all these folks are coming to send their kids to school, where they come to live, where they, you know, they want their homes and their businesses. I mean, Poehler's done a pretty good job. You've got nice homes. You've got nice businesses, and they have segregated their warehousing in a section. And so just kind of keeping our, keeping our toys in the right place is just all we're asking. It's, I mean, we thought we were residential. We've invested our lives here, and I understand it's gonna change.
No, just...
I've been here forever, and I'm the same as you. Farm's gone. Wow, then Mrs. Mary Douglas's house is gone, all the beautiful trees. There's a gas station there, you know, that is happening. It's gonna happen. Yes, I understand. Currently, we don't have, I mean, everyone, where do you go? You go to Poehler to get something to eat. So can we, can we kind of be that, you know, that there's plenty of warehousing on the other sides?
If that's what they wanted to do, we don't choose. It's this year, where you bought your property to build your house is where you chose. It's yours. I guess this property went up for sale. Somebody else could have bought it and decided to do something else. I don't know. I'm just, we don't, we don't pick and choose if there's gonna be restaurants. People petition us.
So, I recently did some real estate research because I wanna be a Realtor, but too many laws, can't do it. There was a mention of be careful when you buy a property, because just because you buy a property and you wanna use it to put something there, such as an industrial situation, you can't always do it unless the commissioners approve it. So it always comes back to what the commissioners say.
No, it's gotta vote, it's got to meet a certain criteria.
But it's very close to our, to residential. Like, you can't mix the zoning, so my...
Everything is gonna be close to residential because everything in this county was residential or agricultural. 20 years ago, who'd have ever, 10 years ago, who'd have thought there was gonna be this boom in warehousing?
Yes.
I don't think anybody was prepared. And if this wasn't on a state truck route near an interstate highway, we would...
Which would be lovely if it was closer to the interstate with its own exit.
Ma'am?
If it was like the land that is along I-16 with its own exits, yes, that would be phenomenal, because you have exits...
Yes, ma'am.
...to get on and off. That would make tons of sense.
Right down 80, right off the parkway, right onto 16.
No, right off of 16 into this industrial area. But anyway, I just wanted to say, could we just kind of decide to be, not where you do warehousing and low-income, positive housing. Yes, there's a need, but there's a need for it all, and we're kind of choosing our county's future right here. So you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose a lot of good people, because nobody's gonna wanna move into a warehousing district. You, I don't, I wouldn't, and I guess it'll be the end for a lot of, I don't know, but we tried. That's all we can do.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna have to, we gotta move on. And I know we've, we've had two public hearings with the planning board and Board of Commissioners, so, and it's been a lot of information to take in. But with that, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
I don't know how to make anybody feel like I'm picking sides here, or not picking sides. I, I look at these projects, and I follow, I follow the rules, and nobody's ever happy with these things, except for whoever feels like they win or lose. But I don't know what else to say about it. I support this. With that, I make a motion. We approve the second reading.
And I agree with you, Forrest. I think they've, kind of with the design, they kept the buffer at 300 feet, so they're not asking for variance. Everything's pretty much by the book, from what I can see. So I'll second the motion.
Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise?
No.
Okay, with that, the second reading is approved, three to one. We'll move to the next item, which is, the planning board recommends approving an application by Randy Hadden, Jeremy Neese, and Chuck Kilderbrandt for approval of a sketch plan located on U.S. Highway 80 for Highway 80 warehouse zoned AR 1 and B 3, proposed zoning 1, map 354, parcel numbers 21, 21B, and 21C in the first district.
Good evening, gentlemen. Yes, the sketch plan, the applicant wishes to develop a 1,100,000 square foot warehouse on Highway 80. I'm just going to point out to you... Um, I'm just going to point out to you that in your packets and also in front of you, you should have the latest copy of the sketch plan. It did not make it into the PowerPoint, the main difference being that the new exhibit does very clearly display the berm to go within the three hundred foot buffer. Um, there's a three hundred foot buffer completely around the property except by the Warrenell Surface Mine, whose use is industrial. You still are seeing an accomplishment of an excess of three hundred feet, uh, by virtue of the detention ponds. The planning board recommended adding the conditions that a platted ten foot non-access easement along George Road uh, be submitted to disallow future access to George Road. A berm be inserted into the three hundred foot buffer along George foot, George Road. Any future sketch plans and development plans would show both the truck court on the opposite side of the warehouse from George Road and lighting designed in a manner that's sight lighting not be visible from George Road. The latest sketch plan shows that the applicant is attempting to meet all of these additional requirements. Staff and the planning board are recommending approval.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that non-access, e, e, non-access easement, that was addressed in the rezoning, what?
It was, yes. It was addressed that there would be no access permitted to George Road.
Right.
Uh, this was taking it a step further and saying that it actually be platted as a non-access easement. So that is reflected on the most recent exhibit you have.
Everybody look, now this is, this I'm trying to, to look now, um.
It hits all the.
Has any questions?
No, it's straightforward.
I guess I would defer to staff as far as to that, that access easement wording.
Yeah, and the berm was in addition to anything the ordinance required, so.
Correct, but it was, I believe it was also addressed in the rezoning as well.
It was, yeah. Uh, with that, I make a motion, we approve the sketch plan as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed likewise? Motion is approved unanimously. Moving on to item number three, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Jay Moppen as agent for Oleg Mitnik for a conditional use located at Highway twenty-one south to allow for an automotive export yard in I one zoning, map number four six five, parcel number one A in the fifth district. Any comments or questions? I thought this was a sketch plan, I'm sorry, I was waiting for y'all to chime in.
This is second reading, I think.
This is, this is the second reading, um, um, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed likewise? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to item number four, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Jay Moppen as agent for Oleg Mitnik for a variance from section three point four to reduce or eliminate required buffers between I one and B three zone parcels, map number four six five, parcel number one A in the fifth district. Again, this is the second reading.
I won't, I, I'm, I'm not gonna support it just because last time I just, I don't, I just don't like the twenty-five foot reduction on the, on the, or reduction of the buffer down to twenty-five feet. That's, that's my hangup.
And I, I understand, I can, I can appreciate that, I, I, on this, for me, this one has particular reasons that, um, that, um, you know, I, I think are appropriate. With that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the second reading. I can't hear.
We did, we did, I, I circled it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, would you like to speak? I'm, I'm okay if you would like to speak, if you'll just state your name, I'm sorry, I was trying to.
I'm sorry, Tina said, so I think last time I was here and I was listening to you, there was just a little bit of an understanding on the mapping of exactly where the buffer was.
Okay.
Um, cause when I read over it, I, myself, um, I didn't bring it with me, I apologize, but, uh, the one A or one AB was, I think it was a little confusing for where the buffer was actually going. And of course, I come unprepared, so.
It's fine, I, I'm. Kind of feeling Ms. Donegan is looking for something, huh? Oh, I'm sorry, that was just a question, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm. And I'm sorry, we're, we're pulling, I see, geez. Have it pulled up now? I'm sorry ma'am, just to clarify what, what your question was, or, or Mr. Moppen may be able, able to.
I think what she was attempting to do, Jay Moppen, Moppen and Jering, was try to relieve some of, um, Mr. Deloche's um, concerns in regards to it. The, the reduction that we're asking for is not against the, the highway side of the property. It's against the, um, the pseudo-industrial park that's there, um, that the parcels have been getting rezoned to, to industrial. If they were in Builders First Force is actually one of my clients as well, they're about to, um, build in that area as well. If they were actually classified industrial like their use is, the buffer would, required would be twenty-five feet. So, I think she was just, uh, trying to make him feel better.
I apologize for my, um, being easily confused on that. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, yep. Motion is approved, three to one. Um, moving on to item number five, the planning board recommends approving an application by Jay Moppen as agent for Oleg Mitnik for approval of a sketch plan located at Highway twenty-one south for Dicky, for Dicky Track, zoned I one, map number four six five, parcel number one A in the fifth district.
This project is an expansion of existing development and will use the existing access on Commerce Court in the Effingham Park of Commerce. It is bordered by industrial and B three zone properties. And, let's see, staff is recommending approval as did planning board. The applicant is here, if you have any specific questions.
I don't, I mean, this is, obviously with the second readings and the approval of the, the rezoning and variance, this complies with, with that. Um, I don't know if anybody else has any questions? No other questions, I'll, um, make a motion to approve the sketch plan as pre, presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed likewise? And the sketch plan is approved unanimous. Now we'll move into new business. Um, item number one is consideration to approve the first reading to amend Article eight, Chapter thirty, timber ordinance of the Code of Ordinances of Effingham County and Resolution number zero two three dash zero zero nine to amend and restate the timber operations ordinance for effective date and for other purposes.
You want me to do this, please?
Yep.
Right, okay. Uh, good evening. So, uh, in order to conform with Title twelve of the Official Code of Georgia, the conservation of natural resources, part of it, uh, staff recommends approval of an ordinance revision which will comply with the new state law. Uh, the ordinance revisions include definition change, notice requirements change, addition of a timber operations bond, posting notices and additions to the violations. So this is timber operations that are here in Effingham County.
Sure.
Um, and the state passed, um, some pretty, I'll call them significant changes that occurred. Um, and, um, the only thing is that, uh, you could probably talk about, um, is, um, we went ahead and put the bonding part in there. Um, it can be a letter of credit, doesn't have to be cash or anything like that. Um, and we put it in there to make sure that we had some type of recourse, um, in case the roads were damaged or something like that from timber operations.
But this is following state law, would they?
Following state law, right, yep, right down. And, um, um, Mr. Newberry, um, did a great job of, of, um, looking at it and, and making some revisions for us. Um, and then, um, Sammy came up with the original ordinance, so it was, everybody's pitched in on this one.
So, I guess the first set of it was the old one and the second one's the new one?
Yes, correct.
But we took out the permit fees, was that purposeful?
So you're not allowed to charge them anymore?
You're not allowed to charge them?
Nope. And they're not even called permits anymore, they're called notices or notifications. So.
The only other question I would have would be, uh, you know, can we insert anything as far as safety of the trucks goes? Ask them to be DOT certified or regulated or, they're DOT regulated anyway, but can we put some of that language in there or?
I would say if they're DOT regulated anyway, it's gonna speak for itself.
And I, I can add, I, I think this was a, um, counterpart to the, um, the, the weight increase, um, that uh, they allowed in state law, that this was kind of, uh, try and counterbalance it uh, by putting a little bit more restrictions, uh, and capabilities, uh, from the county. So obviously GDOT's gonna, uh, have to do that. I will say one thing they did allow us to do, which they haven't in the past, we may not take advantage of it because we've addressed it with our truck ordinance, uh, is that they do allow us to operate our own scales, um, for, uh, for trucks, uh, now at a local level, which they hadn't in the past.
I just have concerns over log trucks. My grandfather was killed by one because his brakes failed. I saw a five-year-old little girl beheaded from a same type of a truck because their brakes failed and they're typically the worst trucks on the road.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed likewise? But the motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to item number two, consideration to approve the first reading to amend Part two, Appendix C, Article two, Definitions Article nine, Amendments to Map or Text and Article eleven, Zoning Appeals of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, um, so in order to conform with Title thirty-six of the Official Code of Georgia zoning procedures law, staff recommends approval of the ordinance revision which will comply with state law. So to give you some background on this, House Bill fourteen oh five is an amendment to Title thirty-six of the Official Code of Georgia. That revised provisions related to judicial review of zoning decisions, uh, more definitions, requirements of zoning decisions by boards or agencies using those delegate authorities. Um, and, um, several other things as far as the effective date, notice and things like that. So the definitions for legislative and zoning actions and quasi-judicial officers, boards or agencies have been added. Um, also seven point one, point four, um, has it been added to, uh, the review authority that gives the planning board the ability to hear and render decisions on applications for variances, special administrative permits, special exceptions, plat procedures and processes and other processes not considered a zoning action. And then seven point one, point eight, point three, variances are explained in further detail, um, that a financial hardship is not considered by state law as grounds for granting a variance. The addition to seven point two administration complies with state regulations for a property owner to appeal administrative quasi-judicial and zoning decisions. And there's also a change to the public notice timeline for quasi-judicial decisions. Um, and a change also, those responsibilities are to the zoning administrator, who currently is Ms. Donegan. Uh, so staff recommends approval to Amendment one. I do wanna clarify one thing, we have yet to understand what a special administrative permit is yet. We don't have that defined and we're working with everybody to determine what that really is. But it is part of the state law.
And therefore part of our ordinance.
And therefore part of our ordinances.
Yeah.
And we will create and come back.
Any other comments, concerns, questions? Be and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen, for both of those, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you. All right, that'll bring us to, uh, item number three of new business. Consideration to approve Resolution number zero two three dash zero one zero to amend the schedule of fees. This is Mr. Mark Barnes.
Good afternoon, Mark Barnes, Finance Director. Uh, this amendment to the schedule of fees covers multiple items. Uh, Development Services EMS, Fire, Recreation and Finance Staff coordinated to review and propose some updates to the schedule. Uh, many items on this schedule haven't been updated in over a decade. And, uh, including most of the recreation items, some of the water connection fees and a few other, uh, fees on here. The, uh, going through just kind of briefly, the proposed water rate change comes from the rate change plan that was approved back in August of twenty twenty. Uh, we're in with that plan, the county will raise rates in accordance with any increases we have in the rates we pay to the City of Savannah. The, uh, the water and sewer connection fees that we have in here are based on capital recovery costs that have recently been calculated. Uh, the EMS changes are based on the Medicare rates, just like in prior years when these have changed. Uh, Development Services adds a building permit rate specifically for industrial and updates the commercial permit rate. And, uh, there's a few other minor changes to the inspection fees as well. Uh, the proposed fire fees in here eliminates the different tiers for the commercial and industrial categories. And, uh, it brings them to one flat rate and plus the five cents per square foot charge. Uh, for residential, the base fee stays the same and the square foot rate goes to two cents. So that equates to a twenty dollar increase on a two thousand square foot house. Uh, staff recommends alternative number one to approve the amendment to the reg, resolution of the schedule of fees.
Did everyone have a chance to review?
I don't know about, why did we go away from a tier program for the small businessman versus the million square foot warehouse one?
That was after a lot of the discussions last year about how the tiers, uh, existed between commercial and industrial. And there was some discussion about whether they were fair the way they were and they seemed a little bit disjointed. So this plan was to kind of smooth that over and just make it uniform across all.
I will say with the connection fees, while I agree that it's a relative conservative, um, approach, even though it seemed large, it's still conservative.
The water connection fee, I think, has been in place since about two thousand four or five and it hasn't changed since then, so.
Yeah.
It seems like we're updating everything where, where it should be.
Or closer to where it should be, probably.
And I'll bring up real quickly on the water and sewer, um, our intent was to do a conservative, um, Our intent was to do a conservative fee now this year and then institute a water and sewer rate study where we can dig deeper for next year to make sure that when new customers are coming online, they're actually paying for their pro-rata share of the system that they're buying into. Right now, they're definitely not, certainly not with the cost increases that we have. But, you know, our goal is to be a little bit more precise next year. So the fees this year are probably, they're, don't get me wrong, they are an increase, but they're, they're probably a little bit lower than where they, where they should be. But we'll, we'll, we'll figure that, that figure out via the study and integrate it next year.
Any other comments?
Once we vote on this, one of these go into effect.
July first, is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule of fees.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. With that, the motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item number four of new business. Consideration to approve resolution number zero two three dash zero one one to set the twenty twenty-three sanitation fees.
Yes, sir. The fee for sanitation this year, there is no proposed change to the sanitation fee. If y'all remember, last year was when we did have a rate increase get passed on to us from Atlantic, but that has not happened yet this year, so this fee is the same as last year's. And staff recommends alternative number one, approve the proposed sanitation fee resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise.
Hey, let me, quick question. Senior card, any, what's the age, sixty-five?
I believe so, yes.
There's some seniors, I mean, at fifty-five, I started getting triple A mail, but I'm just curious. But I mean, that, that needs to be, how do we, how do we know? Do they have to ask for that? That's something, you know, that's something Mark, I think, and some information that can be shared somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that a lot of people are aware that seniors are, there's an age that you get a discount for your card.
Yes, sir. I believe they have to contact the tax assessors and talk to them through, I believe.
But we can actually do, I know we did a reminder maybe last year on the, kind of the senior rebates, particularly with the exemption.
I think that's something we need to do once a year.
And we can, we can send another one out this year and make sure we include the sanitation discount as well.
A senior card is a hundred dollars versus a hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So, I mean, that's twenty-five percent, right? Close.
It's benefit to getting old.
If there is one.
All right, that, that item is, is moved. Moving on to new bu, new business item number five. Consideration to approve resolution number zero two three dash zero one two to set the twenty twenty-three fire fees.
Yes, sir. This resolution sets the fire fee in accordance to what was just in the previous schedule of fees. Staff recommends alternative number one, approve the resolution.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
So no, no changes?
The, the changes that were in the schedule of fees earlier are in this resolution here.
It has to be passed separately.
Right.
All right.
We have a motion by Commissioner Burdette on the floor.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise, none being. Passes unanimously. New business, new business item number six. Consideration to approve to award contract twenty-three dash ITB dash zero three one for the EMS and prison maintenance building construction project to McRight LLC.
Yes, sir. Allison Bruton, purchasing agent. So staff did post an ITB for the construction of the new prison maintenance building, which will be located on the Public Works campus, and the expansion and renovation of the EMS building located in Springfield. So there were three bids received with McRight LLC being the lowest bidder. Staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. None being, the item carries unanimously. Takes us to new business number seven. Consideration to approve a purchase order with Custom Truck and Body Works, Inc. for the purchase of a Type Three ambulance.
Yes, sir. So we, we are still facing some uncertainty with the other five ambulances that we've previously ordered. So this is an alternative that Ms. Wanda is requesting. We did approve another one back in March, the same type of ambulance, and this price is the same as the one previously approved. Staff's recommending alternative one.
So if we get this one in, we can cancel, we'll cancel the other order?
I don't think that's the plan.
Yeah, I, I think by the time this comes in, another one.
So we still haven't gotten any?
In the last three years.
And I can tell you from personal experience, it, it makes a difference what you're riding in, in the ambulance. A big difference.
Remember, we talked about the fancy stretchers, too? It's like, why would we need that?
It, it makes a difference.
Yeah, we're still in a position of get, what we can get our hands on.
Well, and dealing with aging fleet as well, and then shortly after, we found out the first three got canceled, we ended up having one total. So then we're scrambling, trying to remount that on a new chassis, and how do we get that? And, yeah. Even this one will be delayed. I think she said it would be the second quarter of twenty twenty-four before we receive this one.
Yeah. This is a critical service, too. Any other questions?
Any timeframe on the other five?
None.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
And the, and the issue, obviously, is the chassis. We're, we're waiting for confirmation from, from Ford on that. The thing is, we put, put the order in the order bank, and then it just sits there, and, you know, they tell you, you know, several months down the line that they can't fill the order, and it's, and we're canceling, you know, whatever, twenty percent of them. And that's, that's what's happened in the last two years. We're still waiting to hear back for this year. They could very well just say, you're good, and then we could, then, then we'd be all set, but they're not, I, I'm not quite sure with the, with the heavy-duty truck chassis why everything else, all the other vehicles seem to be catching up, and this one, they, they can't seem to keep up with.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. With that, the motion carries unanimously. Moving to item number eight in new business. Consideration to approve Amendment Two for the agreement with the City of Poole for the use of an inmate work detail.
Yes, sir. So last year, we had contacted the City of Poole. The rate previously had been seventy-five thousand, and we had informed them that the rate would be increasing to eighty-five over a two-year period. So this is the second part of that. And staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise, none being. The item carries unanimously. New bu, new business item number nine. Consideration to approve Amendment Two to the agreement with the City of Guyton for the use of an inmate work detail.
Yes, sir. And I do apologize, there's a typo on your staff report, but this, this amendment will increase the rate for the City of Guyton to sixty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. There is a three percent credit against the overall total for the service delivery strategy, the breakout there. Yeah, so staff recommends alternative one.
Gotcha. Questions?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Loach. I'll clarify the second. We'll go with Commissioner.
Neither.
Burdette. On the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. With that, the motion carries unanimously. New business item number ten. Consideration to approve Amendment Two for the agreement with the City of Rankin for the use of an inmate work detail.
Yes, sir. So the same as previous. The Rankin does have a fifteen percent credit against the average salary based on the service delivery strategy, so their overall reimbursement total will be fifty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Loach and a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise, none being, the item carries unanimously. New business item number eleven. Consideration to approve Amendment Two to the agreement with the City of Springfield for the use of an inmate work detail.
Yes, sir. So just like the City of Guyton, the City of Springfield also has a three percent credit, so their rate is sixty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Springfield did have two other requests that they would like added, and I apologize, you don't have this in your packets. One of them, so number three will say the City of Springfield will accept no more than six inmates each day and may request less than six inmates on any given day at the discretion of the Streets and Lanes Superintendent. And item four is the City of Springfield Streets and Lanes Superintendent has the right to return any inmate, inmates before the end of the working day if the inmate or inmates fail to cooperate. I did clarify this with the warden, and he's in agreement with that addition as well.
Very good. That's gonna be my question.
Okay, any questions?
So staff recommends alternative one.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Burdette and a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. None being, item carries unanimously. New business item number twelve. Consideration to approve Amendment One to the Old Augusta Road Water and Sewer Development Agreement between Effingham County and Cowan Investments LLC.
Yes, sir. So in February of twenty-two, the board did approve this agreement with Cowan Investments to allow for a cost share on the design and construction to extend water and sewer service to their site on Old Augusta Road. Cowan Investments has provided an updated budget for the construction, which does increase the county share, as detailed in your packets. Staff recommends alternative one.
Doubled?
Just about.
Yeah, it's just the cost of, just the cost of construction. And the way we.
It did not change, though.
What's that?
We can only require them to accept it if it's within a thousand feet. So our option is to bring it within a thousand feet, and then they take it, the remainder of their way there. We would have done this anyway in order to tie into the logistics parkway line that's eventually gonna connect to Loop It, so it's a.
Ours doubled, so did theirs.
Yes, exactly.
I make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
All those opposed likewise. None being, the item carries. Thank you, Allison. Item number thirteen. Consideration to approve an annexation request from the City of Rankin for a property located along Old Augusta Road South consisting of five point zero eight acres, map number four seven five, parcel number fifty-seven A.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and this property is located in the fifth district this time around. It's not the City of Springfield, it's the City of Rankin. And as noted in your packet, if you view the aerial photography, this property is contiguous with other properties located within the City of Rankin. Staff recommends approval.
Well, it's contiguous, so basically, basically this is, again, I, I, it's more of an acknowledgement than it is an approval.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. None being, the item carries, carries unanimously, and that concludes regular business. The board will move on to reports from commissioners and administrative staff, and I'll start to my right.
Sure. Briefly, I'll bring up, you all should have received a kind of preliminary T-SPOSS list that I had. It did have district numbers listed next to each of those roads. They were pretty well spread out across the five districts, and that really was naturally based on the, the needs of the roads. I will say there is, there might be some of those roads that might get moved into LMIG twenty-four. As you recall, we, we were about, we were about to do the RFP for, or intend to bid for LMIG twenty twenty-three, and then we figured it's only about another two weeks till the twenty-four numbers come out, so we're gonna combine them both together and get them all started in the fall. So that gives us some additional funds to work with. So what I'll probably do is take some, a few of the roads maybe off of that list to, to add to the twenty-four, but I'll let you know about that, and I think that should be coming up at our next meeting at the end of July. Is that right, July or, oh, August, I forget?
The LMIG application?
Yeah.
I would think July.
Okay, at the end of July, because we should be getting the dollar allocation amount at the beginning of July. So take a look at the lists and T-SPOSS list and let me know. Yes, sir.
So with that being said, I mean, do we think we're gonna have everything in line with the cities to have everything ready to go for November?
We should. I did send them each a copy of the IGA. I haven't gotten any comments back. I'm assuming it's good. I will follow up with them this week to make sure it's good. And with that, the only thing that would be remaining for each party is to approve, which we hope to approve in July, the, in the July meeting, the, the actual IGA, which would include the list. And then, once that's all done, it's just, the only item left is to approve the, the referendum, intent for referendum or something?
Yeah, the resolution to call.
Yeah, resolution to call the referendum. So we should be, we should be in good position timing-wise.
Okay, good.
As long as they get, I mean, they'll have a month to get me their list, which obviously are much shorter than ours.
Is that all you have, Tim?
That's all I got.
Wow, okay. Moving on around.
Not confirming?
Any further thoughts on the lights at the school zone?
Yeah, I actually, I have a meeting, I'm trying to set up a meeting with the, with the sheriff to discuss actually three things. One of them is the firearm ordinance. Then, there's actually two issues we're running into with the school district. I just haven't had a chance to meet with them yet, so hopefully I can get some time with them this week. Oh, the, the second is the signs, the.
Ending school.
Yeah, ending and, and starting and so on and so forth.
You have the lights, that would.
Yeah, what, what we found out is they, most of the, the state controlled all those signs before, and so, once the cameras went in, they turned over control to the sheriff's department, so we've gotta, we've gotta get all those, anything that we request in there, we, he, he's got to approve as it can affect the legality of enforcement of those cameras, so.
So that switched the budgets from the state to?
No. Well, I, I think, well, it kinda does. It, the, the, I think, I think that's an approved use of those funds is to maintain the, the signaling and signage at and around the school zones.
That's good. That's all I've got.
Good. Any executive session?
I actually, can we have a quick one with regards to personnel matter?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to go in executive session to discuss personnel property impending litigation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.